Away from our destination and so I'm still here with you. I have a lot of wild stuff happen on Mondays. Was that time I got my car stuck in the mud? Or maybe just every day, maybe my life's just a mess and I just notice it because of how much it happens with planning commission meetings. But yeah, it looks like we have quorum, so it looks like we're good. So I'll go ahead and call to order the meeting, June twenty-sixth meeting of the Mopular Planning Commission. First, we have to approve the agenda, so I'll take a motion to approve. And you're ready?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Okay, motion for Arian. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second for Maria. Those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, agenda approved and we will move on. Comments from the chair. I don't, I don't, I don't have anything new. It looks like we're, you know, going forward with, you know, our summer plans. Think things are moving along like we kind of expected to get through some of these things. Does anybody else have any meetings or any updates or anything? Okay. Did have one question for Mike, actually. I'll just do that now. Mike, we had talked about some I ideas that like some of the stuff that came from Habitat, like including like the state program for for expansion centers. I don't remember the name exactly. Cause I just want to make sure that we're, we're still planning on including that in the zoning changes that are coming up. Is that correct?
Yeah, there are going to be a number of other changes that are in the zoning. But the public input meeting that were, you know, the whatever we want to call it, that, that input meeting that we want to have in July is really about kind of having the conversations around the housing pieces, but there will be a bunch of other pieces in there.
Okay. Okay, that sounds good. I just, I just wanted, I mean, I, I, I thought that we were still on track with that. I just, we hadn't talked about that in a little while. I just wanted to double check in. Okay.
Can I just, sorry, can I just jump in where the Habitat changes, like expanding the downtown district or what were, can you remind me what they were?
There's a, there's this, the state, I mean, I don't want to say that this has directly anything to do with Habitat. It's just in my mind, it's connected because Habitat is something that would be useful for the Habitat project. But there's a, there's a state program and Mike can explain more, but it's, it's, it's just like a growth center thing that, that kind of eases some of the state regulation for certain projects. And but, but cities are partly in control of deciding where those places are.
You're referring to doing the NDAs, the neighborhood designation areas.
Right, neighborhood designation areas is is it neigh- yeah, as neighborhood, because yeah, it's about, it's about residential development. Yeah.
So is it, oh, sorry.
I know, no.
I'm curious whether, I mean, whether we'd want to add it to the bridge if we, I mean, it is, it seems like it's related to housing to me. So it would be expanding the neighborhood development area or establishing one?
Establishing, establishing one because we don't have one, but it doesn't actually require any zoning changes. We've, we've done our review of the regulations. We think we're okay, we can apply. But we're it kind of comes down to the timing. We want to adjust the growth centered designation as well, so we kind of want to package these up into one item. To do the growth center designation, we need to amend the zoning, the zoning. We don't need to for the NDA. But you can attach the NDA to the growth center. So it kind of would save, save a bit of work if we had the growth center done already.
But we do have a growth center. We just need to adjust some things about it. Okay?
Yeah, the country club is not in the growth center, the country club road program. So we need to make an adjustment to add that in.
Yeah, I mean, to me that seems worthwhile to add to the bridge draft and I did correspond with Evelyn a little bit from the city and I think what I drafted is a little bit short of what a typical short commentary for the bridge might be. So anyway, this might be worth putting that in there, seems to me.
Okay, yeah, that's something to keep in mind and it's going to be on the agenda. So what I'm hearing is we could, we can think about some other things to include. Sounds good. All right. So I'm going to, I'm going to move on the agenda unless anybody has anything else in the comments to share arena. Next on our agenda is comments from the general public. We have none present online. Do we have any present in person, Mike?
No.
Okay, so no one's present for comments or general business. So then we get into what we were just talking about. Arian drafted a bridge article for us to review. I went in this morning and I don't think I really left any comments myself. Does anybody else, does anybody have anything to, to, to say about it? We have Maria and we have Gabe. Bed Maria.
I'm only just realizing it's not a Google Doc, so I can't, you guys haven't seen anything I've done. I made tweaks here and there throughout the whole thing. So I don't know, what's the best way to, to share them with all of you?
Uh, how about we just, we make a Google Doc out of it? Do you want to?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm terrible with Google Docs, but Maria, can you put it in Google Docs?
Um, let me see. Well, maybe Gabe can talk while I'm trying to do this.
All I was going to say was thank you, Arian. I thought it was well done. I didn't, I didn't tweak anything, but I just appreciate you putting the work in.
I just, I just made a folder for you, Maria, so you can just open up, I made a folder called Bridge Article. So you can just create a document in that folder.
You should just drag and drop.
Yeah, I think we actually have a, don't we have an out, we have an outreach folder. Actually, let me delete that folder. Just put it in the outreach folder. And yeah, I appreciated it, Arian, and I, I didn't have any major things to, to add myself, but it is, it would probably be good for us to think about if there's any other subject matter we want to include.
Well, you know, I was going to ask too, do you guys usually? I don't know if this, I'm trying to envision what, if this is something like a commentary type, I mean, it seems plenty long to me, but I certainly adding more topics as we brainstorm, but I didn't know if we wanted to have a, if, if we can include a graphic or a description of what the design review district is for ordinary people who, who may not know what that area town is. Cause we talk about stuff inside it and then we talk about stuff outside of it. Just thinking about putting everything at the elementary school level.
I think that's a good idea. I think we might have to talk to Bridge about whether they'd yeah, we could easily provide them, I mean, we, we have the, the map for the district on, you know, the city website. So it'd be easy to provide if, if they wanted to print it or what the hell they wanted to do it. Would you, would you be okay with doing that, Arian? Just, um, I'm like, I think it's good to like, you know, keep you as the contact for this with, between the, like, to be our liaison with the bridge. And just discuss with them whether they would like to include a, a map of the design review district.
Yeah, if, um, if Evelyn from the city can help me and it sounded like she wanted to be involved in that process. As you're, as you're gathering from my problem with Google Docs, I'm like terrible with technology. So if, if someone can help me, I'm totally fine to be the contact.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's good. And you can always just, if you, as far as the map goes, you can, you can reach out to me anytime and I can send you a link to the, you know, to the map on the city website that we would ask Bridge to just include.
Okay, great. Just, you know, an overall map to show what urban one, urban two, you know, those, not everyone knows the districts in town. Cause their proximity to the downtown is going to help the argument, right? A lot in in, in a couple of cases here.
Yeah, the other conversation that we might want to have about the article is, so when we were talking about this, we were initially talking about, you know, maybe July tenth, having this meeting with the public. And then July twenty-fourth, having kind of a city plan kickoff meeting. The one issue that comes up is that the bridge is, by the time we need to send the article to the bridge, I don't know if it's going to be, I think it appears on the twelfth is the next issue. So we might need to push our schedule out one, one set of meetings. So that way we would be doing the zoning on the twenty-fourth. And then the city plan on the August fourteenth. I don't know, or, or something, or we can push to an in-between week or, or pick a special date or something else. There's other possibilities.
I think tentatively that that should be fine. I think we had planned to possibly not meet in August. But if we know that there's not too many conflicts, if we can still get a quorum for August fourteenth, we could go with that plan. And if it turns out we don't, we could you said that would be the city plan meeting?
Yeah, I mean, if we push it to September, it just may mean that I'm working with SE group and rather than doing four of the chapters, we may be doing, you know, almost all of them. Because we need to start getting the public hearing process going on those. So I mean, we may break it into pieces and do four of them on one and then four, four or five of them on one and four or five of them at the next meeting and kind of break the hearings into two groups.
I think that could potentially be okay though. We could, like, if we have any more input later, we can still have that opportunity during the public hearing process, right?
Yeah.
So I think it'd be okay. Cause yeah, I'm we, we don't even have confirmation that the bridge will be able to, to print this right away, do we? Like, we don't have any certainty about that. Arian just shook her head.
Yeah, I mean, Evelyn from the city just emailed and said the submission deadline, I think is July seventh for that mid-July. So right, they could be, they could have a full issue already.
Although she told me they're usually looking, usually scrambling for articles during the summer because it's more difficult to get. There, there's less going on. There's usually not much going on in the legislature, usually not much going on in the city because so many people are on vacations.
Okay, well, we can be optimistic that we can get that done. But yeah, I'll leave it to you guys to sort that out.
Yeah, that was it. Yeah, we, we would have to submit by July seventh in order for the addition that comes out on the twelfth. And our meeting is on the tenth. So that was the trick.
My, my understanding is like after this meeting, we could possibly submit just ASAP, right?
Yes, but the next article still doesn't come out till the twelfth.
Yeah.
So it doesn't matter how, how early we send it, it still won't come out on the twelfth. So if we have a hearing on the tenth, the article will come out after the hearing.
Yeah, I think I'm, I'm good with us kicking things back. And then in the meantime, we have other things to.
And if we get through the more, more of the storyboards and that's more information for SE group to, to continue working on.
Yeah, that sounds fine. We can also talk about some shading outreach possibly. I don't know. Yeah, yeah, we have stuff to, to think about. Is everybody good with that plan? Just pushing things back a little bit, just to make sure that the bridge article lines up with our public hearing instead of being in the wrong order. Okay, do we, Maria, do you have a version for us on the drive?
Yep, I also just sent a link via the chat, the Zoom chat to it. Did you guys see that? I only sent it to Mike. I'm not sure why.
Well, it looks good.
Just to you.
Well, it is there for everybody else. I can see if I can find it. Oh, it's in the chat. So I'd have to adjust the chat.
I'm not seeing it in the outreach folder.
Oh, did I put, I may have put it in the wrong, I put it in a spot called zoning changes.
Okay.
Twenty twenty-three. Oh.
Happy summer. Okay. Yeah, I can just share it from there then. I'll just.
It's in the chat now, or it should be. Assuming I didn't mess up the chat.
Okay. Let's just take a minute and review.
I don't think all the edits came through exactly as I did them, but.
Yeah, Maria, why don't you just go ahead and walk us through what you're thinking and then we'll.
In the first paragraph, I wanted to make it clear these were just ideas that we were throwing out there and not amendments that we were really pushing for, you know? So I think that first paragraph I had I can't see. Okay, so my edit would be to write something, I have the comment on the side there. We wanted to provide, provide an update on our recent work as well as highlight some changes to the zoning regulations we have considered in response to citizen requests that we hope to open to public discussion soon. So that we hope to open to public discussion soon. So just making it seem like we aren't completely tied to these ideas just yet and that we really are looking for public input. Um I don't know.
Yeah, I, oh, okay. I I can't see your comments and I'm just.
Oh, really?
Well, I don't know why. Um I'm looking at it, yeah. I I can't see that comment, at least. I don't know if it's because it's at the top of the page and I just wanna make sure I have your comments to edit it. Um but I'm not sure why.
It's like a super long comment.
Oh, okay, now, okay. It was just like hidden at the top. Okay. Okay, I've got it.
Uh, yeah, what do people think about we have a preference for an opening?
I know the word that you used at the last meeting was that you wanted it to be a listening session for the planning commission to hear from the public and I kinda like the way that sounded. Um, you know, we have some ideas, but this is a listening session to hear what people think.
Okay.
But I don't know how to work that into what your 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 input, I think, was was good. I think we would also wanna have the date. When it says input soon, we probably, I think, would wanna go and put that date of July twenty-fourth. Just in case the only thing somebody reads, if they only read the opening paragraph, they would know, they would hear the date. They may not read the whole thing, but they'll know that.
I I apologize, I'm super late, so this may have already been spoken about, but isn't ARP no longer, it's just the acronym now, right?
I think it is just an acronym now.
Oh, that's weird. So they don't spell out what they are. I just thought that was like.
Yeah, they re they re they re they rebrand, I think they changed their incorporation so that they're now just ARP.
Okay.
Um, okay, I have an idea. I'm gonna share screen and we can just edit at the same time and get it done the fastest that way, I think. Okay. I actually lost part of Maria's comment.
Yeah.
I did add at the bottom here instead of soon for um, we were bringing the the part about the listening session on June, on July twenty-four. But the middle part, we we wanted to provide an update on our recent work. As well as highlights and changes to citizen requests that we will bring to public for input in a listening session on July twenty-four. So that's that's the full. And, okay, Orion's nodding, like that seems fine. Does it seem fine, Orion, if that's the interview?
That captured what I wrote down from the comment, so, yeah.
Yeah, I think so, too. Anybody have anything else for that? Or we go to the next? Try to change the font, though. That's not the font, but the other part, where is it? Okay, next paragraph. Maria, you have something there?
Yeah, I was just, I kinda, I understood what Orion meant by we like, we anticipate will be completed, but that also sounded very final to me. Um and so uh my language is to make it a little bit looser and to say, we've been bit busy working on a final draft of the city plan, which will be ready for public input and comment by and then just put a date there. Make saying completed just sounded a bit too final.
What would be our estimate? This fall? Do you, do you have an idea, Mike?
Yeah, so we're talking city plan ready for public comment. Um, I mean, we've been saying July and that was why we were just talking about August. I mean, if we wanted to say by this fall, I think we would be okay, I would still like to be earlier than that, but.
Uh, we could say late summer or or early fall?
That would, that would be fine.
Okay. Uh, was that, was that the only thing you have, Maria, for this paragraph?
Yep.
Is that good for you? Is that good for everybody else? Do do we wanna remind people what this the city plan is? Here?
I think it's a good idea.
I mean, just uh kinda remind, we can't assume everyone knows what it is. I'm just looking at my other computer that has it. I don't know what the elevator pitch is for the my popular city plan.
I'm gonna give it a rough stab and we'll see.
Strategic plan of the city over the next X years. I know we're early.
I think it may be best to make it, I I don't mean to totally wordsmith this thing, but I think it's maybe the best to I like Brian's suggestion, just say something, we've been working on the final draft of the city plan, you know, which is a document that we update what is it, every seven years? Um, you know, that outlines cities cities' goals, you know, for the next however many years in that period, we anticipate that it'll be ready for public comment, blah, 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 blah.
Um, okay. Are are you? I'll just, I'll just say what you just said, Aaron. Uh, which is or which guides? So you said?
Which which outlines this, you know, the city's priorities and um identifies priorities and and outlines outlines priorities and ways to um and act on them. It's really, it's good on here.
What if, what about just saying outlines the city's planning priorities over the next eight years?
Yeah, I think that's probably good.
That's good.
I think before, Aaron, you said goals, which I liked because that's how the plan is drafted.
Yeah.
Like goals and priorities, maybe, over the next eight years.
Alright. Anticipate it will be ready for. Okay.
I'm sorry, but did we wanna, I just was um noted that, do we wanna further the, uh, well, I don't know if we wanna be more specific about I don't want people to be confused about a listening session and then we talk about public comment in the second paragraph, so is the public comment would be the part of the formal approval, right? The ultimate final approval process for the plan, whereas the listening session, we're positioning that as kind of an interim you know, pre-game of a official public comment, right? So so public comment itself, right, is a term, that's a charged term for us, cause we know that means that we're going to like public hearings, right, official stuff.
Yeah, maybe it's more to like, um, we anticipate that a draft will be released to the public by late summer, early fall.
Right, like a
Did we wanna shift that paragraph to the bottom, maybe? That second paragraph? I mean, we're we're opening by talking about the zoning and maybe it makes sense to just continue with our zoning and then shift that to the bottom as.
I was, I was thinking that, that that's, I think that's the most confusing thing about it.
Well, I guess that was one of my questions, too, I had was our our primary mission of the commission is the city plan. I mean, obviously, we're doing zoning amendments, too, but I, those came along later from in my tenure. The zoning amendments, so I I don't know if this is.
So we're we're equally charged with both, just to be clear.
Well, no, I hear you. I hear you. I hear you. Uh I'm sure we are, I'm sure we are. I just didn't know what we're we're gonna focus on after the at the gate is the work on the the plan or the zoning amendments, I guess, from what everything you guys are saying, it should be uh zoning amendments, cause they're gonna take more time potentially to explain, or they might be more controversial than the plan. I don't want the all the work done on the city plan to be lost in the beginning. And oh, and by the way, we're working on the city plan.
Well, I mean, I will say that I feel like the city plan talk is optional, cause it wasn't the goal of this particular outreach.
Right.
It's like, it's actually kind of the bonus item.
So that makes sense, but at the end. By the way, we're still working on the plan.
I'll throw an also in there to just to signify that different topic here. Is everybody okay with doing that, moving it down like that? In that way, it's it's, I mean, I I just scanning through this, it's like, yeah, with all the rest of this is about zoning changes, so keeping all of that stuff together without interruption, I think, makes a lot of sense, especially since it's so short, too.
But I'm sorry, I haven't gone to the last couple of meetings. This, the focus of this, um, I guess, notice and the paper is is primarily what? The zoning changes? And then
Yeah, it's just.
And notice in noticing the listening session?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the goal of this one is about about the zoning changes, like housing in particular. I mean, there's there's gonna be a bunch of different zoning changes that we're considering, but like this one's focusing more on the housing stuff that uh will be suggesting uh change.
In that case, again, I think it makes sense to just at the bottom of the uh to sort of say at the 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 bottom of this is, you know, we also wanna let you know that we're continuing to work on uh, you know, we continue our work on the city plan, which outlines the city's goals and priorities. And we expect to have that completed, you know, draft released to the public by this fall. And, you know, we look forward to um, you know, hearing your input, is that project progressing as well or something like that?
Uh, yeah, um, that's, yeah, that's what we're going for. Um So Maria, did did you have more on the second, on the next paragraph?
Um, well, later in the paragraph, I just took out. I guess we need to change the Vermont Association of Retired Persons, just to ARP. Right? And then I also just um. And then I just tried to simplify the last sentence.
I'm fine with this. Is everybody else okay? Orion, do you think, think it's okay? Was there something missing from your, what you were going for? Bunch of stuff on the screen covering up buttons. But I was, just gonna delete it.
And I'm sorry to believe in this, but did we, this wasn't the report from CNU and ARP Vermont?
Yeah, does anybody else know that? I'll stop their heads. It's easy for us to find out. We're busy trying to edit, but I can throw Vermont in there if we can confirm.
I looked back at the report, it did say, I don't know if it's ARP Vermont or Vermont ARP, but it said one of the two. I can, I can double check.
I think, I think, I think in Vermont, it's it's AR, ARP Vermont, I think. I I'll double check it right now, but.
No, you're right. It, that's what it is. I just Aaron, you're right, it's ARP Vermont.
I I think buttons are covering up that need here, alright. Does it not do what I wanted it to do? I'm missing where I can accept these changes.
I think they were comments, not changes, so you just have to hit the checkbox. Uh, or actually, maybe if you hit the check checkbox, yeah, there it goes.
Thank you. That is what I was missing. And Orion, you're not the only luddied around. Okay. So we don't have anything for the next one. Just to keep things same, I keep going back to single spacing on this. I think that's what, correct me if I'm wrong, but does anybody know, does the bridge prefer double spacing? I don't think they do. So Maria, what was your next?
No, this was more um just trying to reflect how Mike described this in the last meeting, that you know, when I went through each of these recommendations, I was just like, wait, are we doing all of this? Or is this, you know, like, I'm trying to envision it from an outsider's perspective. And it seemed overlapping, you know, cause like, wait, they can double, but then they can also have up to four, like, what are all these options? And so make it clear that this is like a menu of options that we came up with, but these aren't going to be and that they're still in like uh, we're still brainstorming these ideas. This is just what we've come up with so far. Um, so I think what the, I'm not sure, let me look at what I wrote. So it can just be like the planning commission has come up with the following. Zoning changes, or has. I had trouble thinking of like, what languages would be.
But what about is currently considering the following recommendations? Or is concern, that's currently considering. Si- like, uh, suggesting some, or something that captures that, yeah, we, we may do some, we may end up suggesting some, but not all.
Kind of ideas for consideration.
Oh.
Maybe it's, maybe it's a menu of ideas for consideration.
So okay, so has developed the following ideas for consideration? Was it still?
So that people understand that it's not all or nothing, you know, this is just. They can pick and choose their adventure.
Yeah, so this is the, uh, the, like, like, are we good? I'm gonna move on, as long as, are we good with develop the following menu of ideas for consideration? Yeah, is that okay? Okay, uh, so the next thing is the, the map idea, so we talked about this before, we're gonna, Ariane's gonna reach out as part of this to see if the bridge will. Include a map of the design review district. With the article, I know they have print and web versions, I imagine one might be easier than the other for them. What's the, uh, what's the next thing, Maria?
Um.
Sorry if you need me to.
I know, I'm not sure about the alsos, because it makes it sound like, I mean, I know that we are considering all these things and this. The, the, I'm going back up to the bullet points.
Gotcha.
Didn't have a comment here, but I was just kind of thinking about it, because it made it seem like these things would be done in conjunction with each other, as opposed to their, again, that menu of options idea. Um, but we are also considering doubling the density, makes it seem like we are going to be doing this in addition to doubling the density. So I wasn't sure if just taking out also, just to make it seem like these are all independent ideas. But, I don't know, what do you guys think?
I'm thinking, I'm fine either way, I think the also could be considered as a. I mean, I would interpret that as an either or, or a, uh, an and/or type, type thing, but. Which is, I think, how it's intended. Not sure how other people would interpret it.
I mean, since we positioned it as a menu, I think the also is okay, what I was looking at was the second sentence of the third bullet. And I thought that you guys said that was kind of like the third rail of. Zone changes, or what happened, that was, that was. Um, I mean, I don't know if it's an incremental step towards, I, I guess, it probably is. But also would allow more, how, more infill of housing, right? I mean, I don't know if we wanna talk about eliminating, then, you, you guys are making me paranoid about mentioning, mentioning eliminating density caps. Because of what you said happened before.
Oh, well, I mean, I don't know, I think, I think what, from what happened.
I'm too paranoid. I was like, you guys are maybe scared of that.
I mean, I could see people coming in with like, this is a slippery slope, you know? So I had the same thought, looking through that, so. I don't know.
In some ways, it would be nice to eliminate them, I mean, we know that that's the, that's the recommendation from the think tanks, that, that's the best way, and, uh. I don't know. I don't know how to expect, I don't know what to expect, honestly, about, about how people react this time around.
Yeah, I don't, and, I mean, we could take that one out, um, and also, I'm not sure we need the outside, the design review district, because it kind of is a menu. So we could just double density in all the districts. If they don't, if, if the public doesn't select the first option. Then we would double the density in the design review district as well.
All districts, right?
How about taking that sentence out? And then just reaffirming that this would help create more housing in my earlier.
Yeah, because all the other ones talk about housing, well, pretty much.
Like, this is the pro of doing that.
Well, do we need to potentially, I mean, it would allow for more housing development, wouldn't it, it just, we don't know if it'll actually happen.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm getting at, it would, it would, yes, it would technically allow for more, but, but would, would that lead to anything? We don't know, which is true for any of these changes, when we, we don't know. The, the degree to which density is, is stopping development anyway. Like, by itself, because this is, it's a very complicated issue. Should I take out potentially?
I would say so.
You would?
Are there any other bullet points you wanted to, and are people okay with that bullet point?
Yeah, you just need to take out, we are considering, also in the fourth bullet point, too, the commission is also considering, that's gonna need to be in there.
Uh, uh, what parts do I take out?
Because at the top, it says the planning commission has developed the following menu of ideas for consideration. Eliminating density caps, expanding the density exemption, doubling the density in all districts, and eliminating density caps, we don't need to put in, we are considering.
Good point.
It's a good point. I like the consistency of that.
I think the fourth bullet point is also. Confusing for people who don't know. You know, what urban center one, two, three are, you know, is there going to be, can there be a map of what that means, or is that asking too much to have?
I'll probably clip down, as, I mean, because they're in the design review district, so a map that shows design review district will show those boundaries as well, I just need to clip it down.
Yeah, and I, maybe I should just change it to more general language, rather than using the names of the. Districts and just say, like, currently. The area downtown is, I mean, I don't know if that's correct to say.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I think it's, I think it's helpful to steer clear of, as best we can, or at least if we're gonna say something like designer view district, say, you know. The design review district, which, you know, generally, you know, located near the urban core of, of the town, you know, just to kind of give some. Wayman's context to what we're talking about, I'm gonna guess that anybody who's in design review is gonna know that they're there, but for the casual reader, they wanna kind of get some sense of whether or not. This is something that affects them or not, and just sort of general kind of location cues would be helpful, I think. Understanding that they're not on really great, they're not particularly precise, but I don't know that matters at this point.
What, what do you guys think about this change, just saying currently the three neighborhoods that make up the downtown do not have density requirements? We could ex- extend this to other high-density districts that are adjacent to the downtown.
I would just say currently the downtown, currently downtown neighborhoods do not have a density requirement.
Okay, one sec. You say neighborhood districts? So you said.
I would just, I would just say downtown, like, currently, the downtown neighborhoods. Currently downtown neighborhoods do not have a density requirement.
Everybody okay with this paragraph then, as it is now? Okay. Let's go to the next paragraph, we're being thorough about this outreach, this is a group effort right here, already. Maria?
Yeah, I just changed some of the language, and again, I think we should change the input session to listening session. To discuss these proposals. I just wanted to make it clear again that we were looking for input, and that what we. Were going to suggest, really our suggestions, and not something concrete that we're settled on. There's a lot of proposal proposed, in that sense, so maybe that could be fine tuned, but.
We're, we're saying listening sessions instead of public input, or?
Instead of input, listening.
Public input, but, I'm sorry, public listening?
I don't know, listening session or public listening session? What do you think, Mike?
I don't know if it matters, I think it just depends how it sounds in the sentence.
And I would say we'll be, we will be holding listening sessions, not planning them, we will be holding them. Or hosting, that's always nice.
I like that.
It implies like, be providing cocktails or something, but that's where, people can think that.
Fortunately, the wood stove will not be fired up in July.
Um, I accidentally clicked on some of, like, to accept some of Maria's stuff, so I accidentally did that, but, um. So I'm not sure, we talked about some of the stuff I accepts already, but, um, so we'll be hosting listening sessions to discuss these proposals, uh. Yeah, as well as collect additional proposals from the public before any proposed changes move forward to the official public hearings. People okay with that sentence?
You could probably change the additional proposals to additional ideas, we were trying to cut down on the number of proposals. We could probably take out the, the, any proposed changes move forward, it can just say any changes move forward.
We hope that these listening sessions will be scheduled later this summer.
Next paragraph.
What's that? Oh, start a new paragraph?
Yeah, we, uh, we, we.
I think that sen- sentence goes up.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's new paragraph, it'd be, it's starting, we have also been busy working on the draft, final draft city plan. Then the next sentence is, is the paragraph break.
Yeah, what happened here, I'm. Oh, 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 we also, okay. Alright. How about, we intend to schedule.
Well, actually, it's already been scheduled up top, so we should just go and say the session's gonna be July twenty-fourth.
Yeah, thank you.
At the regular planning commission meeting. From five thirty to seven thirty.
We could, uh, just, just a, just a note that there, if, if the bridge in their, at least in their web version can link to a. To the city website where you can log into, to a meeting, that might be helpful there. Just like something that you could possibly bring up, Ariane, when you, when you discuss it with the bridge.
I'm sorry, what did you say, that was?
Uh, in this, uh, where we talk about when the session will be, uh, if there could be a link in that sentence, or that sentence.
Oh, yeah.
A link, like, at least in their web version, um, to the. Uh, city's. Uh, webpage for, for the public meetings.
Yeah, okay.
I think, I think that's how most people get into these meetings, is navigating through the city website to that page, I assume. I'm gonna go ahead and put the date up top, too, so that they're not. It's like a clickbait thing, where we're making people dig for the info.
And we're only planning to have one listening session, is that right? Because it's plural up above. We will be hosting listening sessions. I don't know, just not one, that same paragraph at the bottom. Uh, the second set, yep, we will be hosting listening session.
Thank you.
A listening session.
I, do you think it's worth it to say this at the end also? Just, just to.
Might just say later in the fall, just so people don't think that it's like happening, we're having a listening session, then a public hearing it right after it.
Yeah, I just want, want people to, to, people who are familiar enough with public hearings to see the listening session and think that we're just. Kind of doing a branding thing and calling the public hearing something else, for them to realize like, no, this is different. Is that okay? Or with everyone to put that?
I think, um, just tweaking the sentence to make it like active language later in the fall, we will hold public hearings.
Yeah, I'd say, I'd say something like more for, more formal public hearings will follow, will. Will occur later in the fall.
There, try to combine both ideas and keep it active as Maria said. So, okay, later in the fall, we will schedule formal public hearings. Yeah, is it okay? Or? Yeah. Okey doke. That's it. So, uh, let's.
Um, if I was, if I was nitpicking, I would say like we, we've capitalized planning commission sometimes and, and other times don't. And maybe city too, it may be city too, but I think it's just, I think it's just because it was new content, you just.
Yeah, I, let's see.
I mean, it, I don't know what the AP says about that, but. I'm pretty sure as long as we're consistent, I don't think it's a big deal. We're important enough to be capitalized, I think.
The Royal Commission.
Right, the, the planning commission.
Uh, interesting, interesting English language question here. Uh, is it really pronoun when we talk, when we refer to the regular planning commission meetings though? Thoughts on capitalization in that context?
I would say, I would say the session will take place during our regularly scheduled planning commission meeting on July twenty fourth from five thirty to seven thirty.
Okay. Think during our regular, okay, we, yeah, we have been stalking like that, and so, some of this.
Yeah, we just say regularly scheduled. Because what is a regular meeting? Supposed to be a regular one?
A special one is the actual answer to that.
Doing a listening session suggests that this is not a regular meeting, this will be a very intimate, friendly. We're hosting it.
There'll be, there'll be cocktails.
I know, I thought.
I don't know if there's going to be cocktails.
I want to start a rumor about that. Um, okay.
And I was just thinking, I, I do, I do like the kind of, um. I like the, I, I very much enjoy the, the, the opening sentence, happy summer from your planning commission. In that same vein, I think, uh, given what we've, we've listed out here, I, I might be good to, the tone wise to say something. We, we'd like to invite you to a, a listening session, um, you know, to, uh, in response to some zoning. Regular changes that we're considering, uh, as part of our regular work, something a little more conversational in tone, I think would be helpful, and I think. The idea of an invitation as a way to open this up would be. A nice summer thing to do.
Uh, are you thinking is this like a second sentence after happy summer?
Yeah, just say something like, you know, happy summer, happy summer for your planning, uh, planning commission. Um, uh, we'd like to invite you to a listening session, um, in response to some zoning changes that we're, uh, currently considering. And then to say like, you know, those, that listening session, uh, uh, that held on, uh, July twenty fourth. And I don't know that we have to put the time at this point, um, to say like, you know, just July twenty fourth, if they're, if they are interested in invitation, they will read the. And, and I'm sorry. I just don't have editing privileges for some weird reason in this document, so.
It's o- it's okay, but I'm just, what I'm afraid of is like changing it and then people being like, nah, I liked it better before, like, ah. Don't know how to go back, but anyway.
Then I'll stop.
Well, we're. It's too late, it's already started. Uh, we would like to invite you to a listening session regarding some of our recent work, that's what I have so far.
I would just say in response to some zoning regulations that we currently, that we're currently in consideration.
Yeah. You guys want me to change this to in response? Mike's nodded, I'll take a single nod, okay. Zoning changes?
We have been considering period.
Hard to fit in the citizen requests at this point.
I don't know that we need to put that in there.
It's included later.
I liked it here because I wanted to make it clear that we weren't just coming up with this. Willy nilly or that this was being spearheaded by the planning department or the planning commission that. We are already responding to citizen requests for zoning changes. Although maybe I'm being like Brian, I'm just being a bit paranoid about the response.
We're new. Frightened easily.
I feel like they've teed us up to be paranoid about.
I know, I was like, I'm so paranoid.
You shouldn't be so paranoid, it's kind of like getting punched in the face, like once you, once it's happened once, you'll.
I mean, I, it's happened to me a lot, I just don't.
Yeah. Never felt like, like time on a planning commission, it never felt like a punch to the face. Not once.
So I think that's good, but I don't think we need in response in the second sentence then, right? Some of our recent works about our. Uh, I don't know, that just sounds confusing to me.
I would just say regarding some zoning changes we've been considering.
Regarding, yeah, good.
Regarding.
Regarding some zoning changes.
Yep. All right, I like that better too. Okay, should we call it with this? Okay, do we have a?
I like Brian's comment to, to add the Montpelier in front, just for this first landing commission. The bridge does get out a little bit beyond just Montpelier, so.
Okay, that's, that's fair for the sake of trying to not impersonate the East Montpelier or Berry Planning Commissions. And, yeah.
In an uproar.
Yeah.
Yeah, these other city, these other city offices are getting lots of calls, angry calls.
Gaming in Berry.
Yeah, okay.
I just wanted to say, I, I hope everyone on the commission could invite some people. To the listening session that you think might be interested in the topic or have ideas or thoughts about zoning changes. You know, I feel like we have. I'm sure we all know at least a dozen people who are curious and interested in this topic, and hopefully we can get a good turnout.
I think that, I think that's a really great point, and, um. I'll, I'll be mentioning this to some people I know, and I'm going to be even more, uh. Uh, conscientious to, to reach out to people when it comes to the city council meeting too, because that's like, you know. That's the, the big, the moment of truth time. Um, but yeah, in, any of these meetings, you know, getting the word out is gonna, it's gonna. Add value, I would, I would hope.
Yeah, can I, can I just do some, add, add some suggestions to tighten this up a little bit?
Okay.
Uh, on the second paragraph, we are also planning, we don't, we're not also planning it, it's, it's, that's not really where. I would just say we, we will be bringing forward proposed zoning amendments.
We, we move paragraphs around, which is probably.
Yeah, yeah, I know, that's why I'm just saying, um, we are bringing forward, um, and then I'd say and not the A R P, I would just say and A R P Vermont. In the second, yeah.
Oh yeah, we never.
Yeah, that's fine.
We never made that change, actually. Oh, but we verified, it's really.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
And then A R P Vermont promotes, I, and I, this is just largely, I'm get wary of plugging like. Making representations about what A, A R P Vermont and C N U generally do. I don't know that. It's our job to kind of characterize what it is they do, I just don't, I always get a little wary about that. Like, we don't, you don't know their mission statement, particularly.
Came from, that came from the letter that they sent to us, I'm assuming. That's when I read that.
C N U, I did take off their website, but I just wanted to be clear that C N U was really the one that wrote the report, I guess, but.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, thanks, Ariane, and I, I'm, I feel comfortable since we're using their words to describe them.
Okay, that's cool, so then, so then in the fourth line down in that paragraph, it's, it's again, A R P Vermont.
I was gonna take, uh, a motion to prove this when we're ready, and at the same time, I just want to say that we should probably include in that motion. Because, because we did do some tinkering here, that, uh, we should, um, entrust Ariane to make any grammatical changes that she needs to. Wordsmithing, in case there's something we missed before she proceeds to, just want to say that, like, what's, what's her motion?
Do we want to also say, you know, Evelyn from the city said she would take a look at it, I don't know, she has some other, you know, we could say like non. Substantive changes or something like that, that she might suggest.
Like, I, I may have missed this, does Evelyn work in the, um, city manager's office, is that?
Yeah, she's the city's new communication director.
Okay.
So we finally, we finally have somebody who is officially a communications director who actually has the background and experience and training in it, so. She's very good at what she does.
Okay, that makes, that makes sense, um, because I, I, you know, I missed last meeting, so I'm not, this, this connection between Ariane and Evelyn. Missed out on that, but, okay, uh. Uh, did we have any other changes before we're ready to vote this out?
I, I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm trying to get this tightened up as best I can. The first pair, the first sentence in the third paragraph, the report recommended removing the density cap for all zoning districts in the city. I, again, that this is in line with trying to stay away from technical verbiage and making this more accessible. I think the second, the second sentence does a good job of contextualizing what density caps are, or sort of defining it in a. More accessible way, I would say like, the report recommend removing, um, uh, moving, uh. Limit, certain limitations on the number of units allowed per square feet, also known as density caps. In zoning districts throughout the city. I just, maybe I'm being too.
I'm wondering if people will know if that means if they truly don't know, like, you know, if they're coming from a place where they don't know what density caps are, would they, would this? Did I get your point, I get your point?
No, I get, yeah, I just don't, I don't want to make it a, a crazy weird salad to get there, so I'm, there's a balancing act there, I'm just.
How about the report recommended removing zoning regulations that limit? The number of units allowed per square foot?
Yeah. Also known as density cap, that's, yeah, I like that.
And maybe units, I think is also like housing units?
Did you say based on square foot, that you said?
Yeah, I think you can delete that section, you have square footage, there you go.
Yeah.
I'd say, I'd say.
Instead of saying parcel based on square footage, number of housing units based on lot size. Then people think of things in terms of lots.
Okay, that's. Number of housing units based on lot size, that's. Good. That's succinct.
I'd say also known as density caps.
Instead of otherwise?
Yeah, otherwise this sounds weird, it's like it's creates a. Comparison as opposed to a inclusive, AKA. Sorry, I just always get, I'm always sort of sensitive to the idea that like, we sometimes lose sight of what we know and assume others know it. Um, especially with these things, so.
Totally agree.
So we don't need the second sentence or no?
Well, I think cleaning up the for all zoning districts in the city, or is that? Okay, never mind, never mind, got it.
In all zoning districts?
I think the second one still adds some context or like helps fully explain if someone didn't get it with the first sentence.
And if I'm correct, it's, it should be currently a certain number of units are allowed per square foot, not is allowed.
Units are. What's a certain number is allowed? That's why the word processor's not telling us wrong.
The operative isn't number, it should be units.
Let's see if we change to R if it tells us it's wrong. Thanks, Google.
Am I wrong about, I could be wrong, I'm not particularly.
I don't think Google's just very picky about grammar. I changed it to R. Everybody give R? We don't need to. Worry too much about that, okay. So with that, I will take a, a motion to entrust Ariane to, uh, well, a motion to approve this article for publication on our behalf. Uh, and you know, with um while granting Ariane the power to make any wordsmithing or grammatical changes necessary to uh, you know, publish it. Anyone wanna make that motion?
Uh, I'll make that motion with the express proviso that entrusting Ariane with such power is fraught with.
Yeah, I know, I hope it doesn't put her on the path to evil, uh. So we have a motion from Erin, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Maria. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, so that's uh two, three, four. So yeah, we're just missing John, right, so, so six, zero vote, favor, uh, passing. Um, okay, thanks so much, Ariane, for your work on this. Thanks, Maria, for uh your extra review, and thanks everybody else for helping tonight. So it's saved in uh just for, make sure we, for future reference. It's, it's saved in the zoning changes folder. On the Google Drive. Okay. I stopped sharing, right?
Correct, yes.
Thank you, okay. We move on the agenda. Which is to finalize approval of storyboard outlines for transportation natural resources, I have not uh been involved with this too much, so um. Mike, uh, wha- what did, what do you have in mind for, for this, do, do we need to just, do we need to vote on this, um, do we? Um, I guess obviously we need to ask people if they have any final comments, but I take it that there was work done in the last meeting about it?
Yeah, there were a couple of outstanding pieces. Now that I turned those off, now I gotta go find them again. Oh, that's right there, all in uh word storyboards. Alright, so I, we went through this one, the transportation at the last meeting. I went through, I believe I accepted all of these. This down, um. Link to the complete streets plan, yes. That is the nation. Oh, on this one, the only change that I had to make for this meeting, uh, we didn't approve it, was we had two committees that weren't discussed, so I added in, we've got uh Montpelier has two communities dedicated to transportation, the Transportation Infrastructure Committee and Complete Streets Committee. Uh, M TIC is tasked with advising city council on policies, infrastructure improvements related to transportation, um, and then the Complete Streets. So, if anyone wants to take a quick read at those two, that was, those were the only two additions that needed to be made.
Anyone have any comments? Changes, no?
No, it looks good.
All right, looks good, Mike?
All right, then I will stop sharing that one and open natural resources. So, natural resources, we um, I think that's the only piece we need to look at. Yes, so the change here, and unfortunately, uh, so I went through, accepted most of the other changes, and then was trying to work on this planning context, and as I talk about this, I think everyone else will start to remember it. We were trying to fix this thing, and unfortunately, when I made the changes, I kind of deleted what was already there, so now we're really kind of stuck having to go back, we had to. But the idea was, we really wanted to capture the fact that um, the planning context for natural resources is that we are the compact historic settlement and a lot of what we do is by absorbing growth, we're helping to protect the natural resources surrounding us. Um, but at the same time, we also have some of these, these things that we care about, um, like water quality and land conservation, so. I tried to rewrite it, and I don't know if I hit it, but I tried to capture that other sense. So I'll let you guys take a look at, it's the stuff in yellow.
Where does the quotation come from exactly?
That's under state law, that's forty-three oh two of the Title twenty-four.
Are we, are we planning on dropping like a little footnote in there to reference that, or?
We could.
I, I think it's helpful, if we're gonna use quotations, we should probably put a little citation in.
You could probably, well, I don't know, one way to do that would be the link to the statute on the state website.
I mean, if there's like a, just we could put a, drop a hot link in there, something maybe.
Anybody have comments about this approach?
I like it, I think we went over that language over and over again the past two meetings, and I think Mike was able to consolidate all the different ideas people were throwing around.
Yeah, thanks, I, and I was gone for those meetings, can I ask, what's the, I'm trying to distill what the what are we trying to say in the first bullet point, the accommodating growth in order to reduce the pressure to develop forests and farmlands?
So the planning context is trying to lay out our goals. So it's, it's kind of kicking off, ha- our, our laying out of our goals and what we're trying to accomplish in, in, in this case, natural resources. And one of our key points that the public doesn't generally see is that a lot of our protection of natural resources actually comes from accommodating growth.
Accommodating growth in the urban core, or the urban center, is that what you mean?
Well, just accommodating growth within the city of Montpelier, mostly, you know, anywhere, we have some rural lands, but really Montpelier is the compact settlement that protects the rural countryside. Um, and that's one of the points, because, you know, sometimes, like, we don't protect, we don't regulate the protection of primag soils in the city of Montpelier. We're gonna lose that, we're gonna build on it here in the city, because by building on our soils here within our boundaries and hooking to sewer and water and accommodating density, we're not we're, you know, that development is not being forced out into East Montpelier and these other rural places where you know, those ag soils are actually helping farms.
Okay, that make, that makes sense, and um, if I just might suggest in saying, I, I think adding growth accommodating growth within the city to reduce development in forest and far, and neighboring forest and farmlands.
Within the city.
Yeah, it's just the, the accommodating growth was, is not sufficiently contextualized to help me understand.
Accommodating, accommodating within the city in order to reduce the pressure to develop.
I would just say to reduce, to, to, to reduce the development in neighboring forests and farmlands.
Would to, did we want to reduce the pressure to develop, or to reduce the development pressure?
I mean, isn't, isn't the idea, if you reduce the pressure, it actually reduces development? And like, they're the same, right? The, the objective is, is to reduce development, period, in neighboring communities.
Ah, okay, reduce development. Do we wanna have reduced development on farm and forest lands in our neighboring communities?
Yeah, I think that makes, yeah. It's just the, the reduced pressure, I don't understand what it means, you can just say to reduce development, I think it makes sense.
Good.
Yeah, good to me. And I would just say, instead of in order to reduce, I would just say, accommodating growth within the city to reduce development on forests and, uh, uh, to reduce development in neighboring forests and farmlands, I don't know, something like that.
You could say forest land instead of forest to kind of make it consistent. Instead of saying on forest, imagining people trying to build atop trees.
You could say development in forests and farmlands, I don't know.
Yeah, but the space. Put the space down there, forest and farmland, if I separate farmland into two words.
Sorry, I feel bad, having been absent the last couple of meetings to kind of parachute in and do this stuff.
Fine, totally fine.
All right, that feel good?
Uh, and I just, I'm sorry, the last bullet point, I would just take away, I would uh delete through.
Yep. Okay, does anybody else have any comments on, on this section? Are we good with this being on the website? Okay.
We will get other bites at the apple at this one. All right. So now, getting to the new stuff, arts and culture. All right, well, actually, I don't know if somebody else wanted to take the, take the controls of this one?
Uh, sure, I, I can, I can walk through and um have people.
Yeah, I can stop sharing if you wanna open it.
Okay. Here we go. Arts and culture, uh. So Maria's suggestion to cut the word outwardly here, Montpelier's arts and cultural life represent the essence. Guess that makes sense. Um, anybody good, or is everybody good with that? Okay. Um, I had some things down here, I did end up, yeah, capitalizing the C in city for pronouns for things. Ended up, I mean, I don't know, this is I'm gonna start from the beginning, all right, uh, I, I said saying, instead of saying Montpelier is known as a thriving artistic community, that sounds like a, a proclamation thing that I've been trying to avoid in these, like a, like a self-proclamation thing, so I changed that to more like strives to be a thriving artistic community. Um, we could use a different word beside, or different verb there besides strives, but uh, what do people think about that?
I like it.
Okay. Um, so, yeah, so in two thousand eighteen, the city completed the end, and I had not been calling it the Art Synergy Plan, but Art Synergy was the group that was created that first put the plan together. So to kind of, but the plan itself is called the Public Art Master Plan. Well, I mean, Mike, what are your thoughts in calling it the Art Synergy Public Art Master Plan, um, or or, I don't, I don't know, like, like, look, what's, what's a way to do this correctly, but also, you know, not make it sound like too crazy of a name?
Yeah, I'd have to look at the title, but if Art Synergy is the company that made the Public Art Master Plan, then I didn't know if that was h- how they named it with the Art Synergy Master Plan.
It was, well, I don't, I don't know, I don't know where this, like, who drafted this paragraph, um, the Art Synergy part.
So this is um S E Group has tried to use as much of our language as possible to pull these things together to make these draft scripts, so probably it's something we gave them.
Uh, we didn't give them art synergy, um. Like, because I, I drafted that original thing, and I was not, definitely not calling it art synergy. Um, okay, well, in that case, I might just cut that part out, like, I, I just thought maybe there was like an official, like, technical reason to call it that. Um, but I mean, the title of the public, the title of it is the Public Art Master Plan. I double-checked that this morning, uh, and it was drafted by something called Art Synergy. Uh, and then that plan created the Public Arts Commission, um, which we now use to like, put the, to implement the plan. Okay, uh, so in two thousand eighteen, the city completed the Public Art Master Plan, which articulated the mission, vision, goals. This needs to be.
And goals.
For public art in Montpelier, the plan. Also prioritize strategies and identified resources to aid in the placement, creation and maintenance of public art. Uh, the commission subsequently created the city's first public art, okay, we don't need that. That's, that's not.
Yeah, that was, that piece was wrong, because I, I thought I made that correction, but maybe I didn't, because I reviewed this before and I. Had the order incorrect. When I first reviewed it. Said we created a public. Art Commission and they created the master plan, and it's not, we created the master plan. And a recommendation of the master plan was to create a public arts commission, which is what we did afterwards.
Is that good with people?
The last sentence in that paragraph just be, this chapter works in conjunction with the goals of the Public Art Master Plan.
I like it.
And supplements that plan and the work of the Public Art Commission.
Wait, okay, yeah, yeah. Hey, um.
So I was guest user, and we have a list for the map, so that's all that comment was about.
Okay, do we need to keep that just for future reference then?
Yeah, just keep that, so that way, I know that's, that's coming.
Uh, so this next part is just, when I went through it. There was just a lot of ampersands all of a sudden, and I'm like, are we, are we doing ampersands now, like, and I started to change some of them, but then there were so many, I was like. Did I, did I miss the memo, the ampersand memo, we're, we're doing this now? Just, so just to get clarity, like, do we want ampersands, or do we want the word and? Any, any opinions?
I think it depends on how it's. How we, we do it, we just, like you said, we should be consistent, and, and sometimes it's the Arts and Culture Plan, or Arts and Culture Chapter.
For the other chapters that have and. Do we have another chapter that's and, I mean, just, I'm not, I mean, this is the first time. Are we using ampersands there as well? We weren't before.
Yeah, we'll just have to check to see for consistency. But we can make the decision now that says we'll just use ands, and then if we, if it comes up in the other one, we'll fix them.
I'm, I'm in favor of ands unless someone else has a different. I mean, I can see an ampers, I don't know, for like a branding thing, I don't know.
Yeah, I sometimes use the ampersand only because a lot of times these chapters will come up in a list, so we might have, um. You know, um. The transportation, housing, utilities and facilities, and public safety plan. And you end up with the extra and in the middle, because it happens to be. Utilities and facilities happen to be together, using the ampersand kind of makes it a single unit. But. I'm, I'm a. Not the top English person for how we should be correctly putting these things together.
I, I was thinking the way, like, the most compelling reason to possibly use ampersands, if we're doing it for some kind of branding style type, like. Some law firms use like a plus instead of an and, then, I mean, like one of those things.
Yeah.
But, um. Okay. Um, alright, so I skipped ahead of, so, so Maria had.
I was just trying to open up that paragraph, that, or not the paragraph, open up that section and just say. All of the different things that arts and culture are related to, um, I think originally it was just economic development. But we then go on to include transportation and all these other things.
I think, uh. I think I, I had done the first draft of that one, and I, and I like, had hoped to flesh out some more, because I, I. Kind of wrote part of it, um, but I, yeah, did not write a lot, so that's why I think it, it was limited to that. Do we wanna add content, oh, um, it looks like there, yeah, there is some content added.
I think there is.
Um, good. Oh, so this one, this, this where it says like, in an unexpected way. I just flagged this paragraph, because yeah, there, this was in the original, this was in the original thing that we had had, and. So originally it said, the Arts and Culture Plan relates with the Transportation Utilities Chapters by enhancing. Ordinary practical infrastructure to make it contribute to the aesthetic value of the city. The Arts and Culture Plan calls for increased functional art such as unique bi racks and benches. Um, like, I thought that that was, like, that was fine, but this, so this paragraph has changed to. Like, in an unexpected way, it's like. That confuses me, because it makes it sound like the city's confused about its own plan, or something, like, I don't know, um.
I'm not a fan of the unexpected way either.
So just, I just wanna juxtapose these to see if like, if there's a version of this paragraph that we. Want between those, and I just wanted to ask. If there are parts that people like of each one, or, or what we should do about this.
I like yours, Kirby. Or sorry, the original version, I mean, what you have in the comment.
Are people okay with replacing?
Yeah, I like the original.
Might actually all be eleven. Oh, we got different font. Got Latin.
Alright, this is all gonna get pulled into their thing anyways, this isn't a, a thing, this gets put into the storyboard, and they'll reformat it. To whatever the storyboard format is.
Change to Latin? Um, yeah, I'm just having a. Over here, alright. Alright, we'll leave it at that, uh.
I have a question here, and I think this is because I wasn't part of the. Um, discussion of this chapter, but. As a person who owns an art studio in town, there's, there's. Montpelier being a thriving artist community also depends on housing, you know, people can't live here. So, and that, there is one sec, one of the goals is to support. You know, maintain and improve the many independent studios, galleries, theaters. That done, is that done through the planning department, like, who is supporting that?
Well, I mean, we've got Montpelier alive, we've got the. The Public Arts Commission, we do have staff, uh, Josh Strom, who's our community and economic development coordinator. He is, uh, he staffs the Public Art Commission, so. Um, there's that, there's also a number of other policies and. Programs that we do, I mean, Lost Nation Theater is hosted upstairs, they basically don't pay anything to be up there, so we've got. Um, small things like that, using space, uh, the main lobby here has, um, art. Space, um, so we've got a number of larger and smaller things that. You know, now that we've got the Art Commission, we're trying to do more, um, of these efforts.
Okay. So the planning department doesn't really come in.
Well, the, I mean, Josh works for the planning department.
Oh, okay.
So he, he is.
Uh, so, we don't wanna add anything. Relating the two or anything, are we good? Or did you, did, did, did you wanna, uh, link the chapters or anything like that, Maria?
I don't know, it, it's because the paragraph opens as saying that, you know, we're striving for Montpelier to have an active artist community. But then, I guess we're trying to do that through hiring artists to provide public art, is that the idea? A thriving artistic community.
Through our, through our planning, uh. Yeah, I mean, there's, well, I mean, there, there's the Arts and Culture Chapter, which has, it has a number of strategies for. Increasing the amount of art around, but, um. This artistic community thing, I don't think, I don't think that was in what we originally had said. Uh, although it's, it's fine, I think to include that here as a goal, uh. But that's, that's not exactly as far as the, purely the planning part of it. Uh, what, what we're like necessarily trying to do through planning. I think, like, what Mike was saying, there's some things outside of the planning context that shows that Montpelier. Tries to support art in other ways, like with Lost Nation, and, and various other things, but. Uh, it's a good question about, like, whether this plan is, is tightly related to. The artistic community itself.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember back to what was in the plan, um, the spec, the specifics, I know there was some things in the Art Synergy Plan, wanting a, you know, an artist in residence. And, um, a couple of pieces similar to that. Um, and I think we had some of that conversation. About the plan of, you know, what, what is the focus, I mean, a lot of this is talking about arts, but we also talked about, well, what, what about culture and. You know, how does that fit into everything? But I think one of the first pieces was, Montpelier has, you know, call ourselves out, we haven't been doing a very good job. Um, as a municipality, when it comes to art, um. There were a lot of private, you know, we've got the Savoy Theater, we've got Lost Nation, we've got. Um, uh, a lot of, of other art studios that are out there, but the city itself wasn't doing a lot. Um, not like, uh, Berry City, where, you know, you've got a lot of statues and monuments everywhere. It, it was, um, you weren't here, Maria, when we were talking about it, but. You know, there's a thing in planning, there's a period of time in planning, which was about eighteen eighties to about nineteen ten, nineteen twenty, which was called the City Beautiful Movement. Where cities all around, um, the United States and all around the world. Really invested in, in public art and beauty, and that's where all the statues come in, if you look in other communities, you will see a lot of these. Statues and monuments, whether they're war monuments, or, uh, statues to certain figures. They all came out, they were all put up in the same period of time, it was a big movement, and for, for some reason and somehow, Montpelier got completely missed. Um, there's very little. Public art from the City Beautiful Movement that came out, in Berry City, we can go in and show you the, uh, Burns Memorial and the, um. The Youth Triumphant at, in City Hall Park, and. Uh, a number of things that came in, but in. Montpelier, we, we really didn't have much, and it was kind of surprising, and so this was kind of an opportunity to start. Turning the page and saying, what, what can we be doing now to start to get more public art? Um, that's public art, uh, as opposed to, uh, artists. And I think, yeah, here it goes, it, so aspirations, two aspirations, one that targeting the public art. Thoroughly integrated in our urban landscape, that's what I was just talking about, that city beautiful, those, uh, you know, public art in our benches. Um, Berry City has little gargoyles and dragons and stuff on their bike racks. Um, and the second one is to find out how, how to have a thriving studios, galleries, theaters and other venues. And recognize as a destination and home for artists. That was our second aspiration, so that's, it's less about us as municipality, and more about us as supporting, and that's where you see four and five. Are supporting B. Those were the goals, to maintain and improve the studios, and to increase opportunities for affordable art courses. For residents through programs at Community Services Department and other departments. And these can all be improved, um, if people see it, but these were mostly taken out of the Public Art Master Plan.
Right, I mean, I'm making the point here that. The aspiration. Is that this will be a home for artists, but nothing really touches on that.
Yeah, making sure they're actually home, actual homes for artists.
Destination and home for artists, and. Somebody, I'm very tied into the artist community here, and it's not an easy place to live.
Are we talking like purely because of the lack of housing, or, or something?
No, for sure, well, and also a lack of studio space too, right, like, all of this is tied to housing and real estate. That's why I was asking what the city does to further that aspiration. And it sounds like you do do some things for like Lost Nation, so it seems very piecemeal, but there isn't like a program to support it.
Yeah, this is, this is a new chapter, I don't know if you, if you knew that, but this is, you know.
And I wasn't here for any of this part, so this is all kind of new.
But, but I mean, if that gives you any idea about piecemeal planning in the past, I mean, there, there wasn't a city, there, it wasn't part of our city plan before. Uh, so we're trying to change it from piecemeal to something more dedicated, and it's not just us, it's like. What, what the Public Arts Commission and the, and the Public Arts Master Plan are doing is, is more than what, you know, we've done so far. But, but we are trying to be part of that, making it, making it a concentrated, yeah, kind of effort. But it's not too late to take. Some of these, um, like, goals and be. And develop more strategies to include. Uh, like, you know, we can always, we can, uh, it's, it's not too late for us to, to add more, so if you have ideas, now that you are here. Maria, and you have this background of knowledge, if you can take a look at what the, like, you know, the aspiration B is. Mentions a destination and home for artists, and if you're not seeing goals and strategies that, that help get us there, but there's, but there are achievable. Things that we could consider, um. Let us know.
I'm sorry, Kirby.
I was just gonna say, yeah, just, like, let us know, and it's not too. I was just gonna say, yeah, just, like, let us know and it's not too late for us to add more to this plan before we take it to the public.
Oh, I was just saying, this is in terms of like the. Going back to. The synergies. That the housing section could be in synergy with the arts and culture section. That was where I was kind of going with that. That they are. Related, because when you want artists here, you need to fix the housing issue.
Yeah, we can do synergies, but I mean, I, I was kind of taking it broader than that too. Like, like, because, because we're developing this chapter in the first place, and like Mike just said a minute ago, most of our ideas came out of the master of arts. Or the, uh, the master plan, that, that, that's, that's pretty new. Uh, which is great because we wanna make sure that what we're saying in the city plan is, you know. Works, works together, synergizes with the other, uh, master plan. But at the same time. We're not exactly, like, like, the city plan's a little bit broader, and if we wanna start putting stuff in there that's, that links. Housing together, that's probably beyond the scope of what they would have thought about for the, for the public arts master plan. But it's stuff that would, would be, I think, within the scope for what we're doing, so if those ideas exist, we can try to. We can try to put in there, so, so.
Getting it, yeah, Maria was just getting at maybe in that sentence, we talk about economic, the transportation, utilities and facilities, maybe housing should be one of those. As one of those chapters. And then. We could add a comment. You know, one of the berry, one of the barriers to. Growing our arts community is the lack of housing and affordable housing, or something to that effect. We can see of this plan.
Sure.
I would also broaden that a bit more to housing and real estate shortage, because I know a lot of artists who can't find studio space.
Like rough draft on the top of the head, but. Trying to link some of the things that you're talking about.
Yeah, I think that. Thumbs it up.
I have to leave unfortunately, but, um, thank you guys for all your good work, I don't think you need me for the. Adjourning, right?
Uh, no, but thank you, Ariane, for pointing out that it's that time, we got a little caught up. Um, okay, let's, let's all plan to get out of here.
I think that was it for the chapter, so.
So yeah, that's.
That one wrapped up.
That's it, we'll consider that wrapped up. Uh, and, um, I'll go and take a motion to adjourn and we can pick up the other items from our agenda at a later meeting. You know, we don't have, we almost, we almost made it through. Motion from Ariane, do you have a second?
Second.
Second from Aaron, those in favor of getting out of here, say aye. Okay, see you all at the next meeting.